No, no se votó. I asked them, told them to order the vote, and they gave me a bar of blood. And I lost my speech.
Moshe Benda?
Yeah.
Thea Jackson?
Here.
Moshe Newhouse?
Here.
Moshe Rixit?
Here.
Gabriel Rodriguez? Ben Samu Tresser?
Here.
Isaac Slacken?
Here.
David Gonzalez?
Here.
Mary Omer?
Here.
I have one additional addition to the agenda, then we'll make a motion to add everything to the agenda, and then we'll vote on the additions. So this is just an added to the agenda. This is the addition to the agenda. Resolved with the Board of Education hereby appoints Laura Winters as Superintendent of Schools for a three-year term commencing on or about July 1st, 2017, subject to the development of a mutually agreeable contract and executive county superintendent's schools approval. So that, and that can be moved to move that to add it to the agenda, please. Is it just to add it to the agenda? I'm going to make the motion. Second. Roll call on adding it to the agenda, please, Mr. Robinson.
Moshe Rixit?
Yes.
Thea Jackson?
Yes.
Moshe Newhouse?
Yes.
Moshe Rixit?
Yes.
Gabriel Rodriguez? Ben Samu Tresser?
Yes.
Isaac Slacken?
Yes.
David Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mary Omer?
Yes.
And that will put a different adjournment? We're going to add that resolution that I just read to the personnel agenda. It'll be the last item on the personnel agenda now.
Now, can we make a vote on the agenda?
I think we're in the middle of a motion right now. I want me to use Mr. Robinson on adding the other items to the agenda. Could you just ask for a roll call or vote on the other additions to the agenda?
That was voted before me, right? Yes. Okay. I would like to make a motion to move the agenda since it is tough a meeting, someone has to fire commitments, and I have a waiting for them. And I came to the meeting on short notice, I'd like to move the agenda and vote on it. This is going to go out of order.
You can't move the budget until the...
Well, we'll do that after.
We need to have the public hearing on the budget first before we can vote on the budget.
What was the vote on the personnel agenda?
Do you want to make a motion to move the personnel agenda?
Correct.
Mr. Robinson?
Correct.
I'll make the motion.
I'm making the motion to move the personnel agenda.
I'll second it. This is a motion to move the entire personnel agenda, including the addition that I just added, which is Winters.
But that's the superintendent.
Yes, correct.
I think I'm going to do a roll call on Moshe Bender.
Here.
Thea Jackson?
Here.
Moshe Newhouse?
Yes.
Moshe Rixit?
Yes.
Gabriel Rodriguez? Ben Samu Tresser?
Yes.
All members have to vote yes and no. Mr. Bender, yes or no?
Yes.
Isaac Slacken?
Yes.
David Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mary Omer?
Yes.
Motion carries. I think we made the votes from the sitting.
I just want to congratulate Mr. Winters. We are happy to accept him as superintendent and work this way under the authority of the board. Thank you.
What's wrong with the agenda?
So I'm going to hold a motion to approve the corrections for tonight's agenda. Second.
Motion.
Second. Roll call. Moshe Bender?
Yes.
Thea Jackson?
Yes.
Moshe Newhouse?
Yes.
Moshe Rixit?
Yes.
Gabriel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ben Samu Tresser?
Yes.
Isaac Slacken? David Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mary Omer?
Yes.
And the motion to approve the business office of Bender. Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Do discussions until we, um, we're going to vote. Any discussion?
Roll call.
Moshe Bender?
Yes.
Thea Jackson?
Yes.
Moshe Newhouse?
Yes.
Moshe Rixit?
Yes.
Gabriel Rodriguez? Ben Samu Tresser?
Yes.
Isaac Slacken? David Gonzalez? Ben? Mary Omer?
Yes.
The remaining members to the other areas.
Any presentations this evening?
Yes, and follow up of the public that night.
To move to the recognition of the public? Good evening. We'll do the recognition of the public now. A reminder to everybody that we have a short three-minute time mark. I was talking to Mr. Robinson about this. There's going to be a public hearing on the budget. To do this most part recognition of the public should be anything but the budget. I'm going to ask for Mrs. Robinson does her budget presentation, and we're looking for the public for the public hearing for the budget. Okay, unless we want to just do the budget presentation first, and then the public can comment on anything? That's fine too. Let's do the budget presentation first then.
Hi, good evening. So tonight I'm going to present the 2017-2018 budget. And I just want to thank the superintendents, the board members, and the state monitors as we collaborated to bring forth the 2017-2018 budget in its final form. The Lakewood... The Lakewood Board of Education's budget account for educational research is concluding but not limited to textbooks, supplies, and stereo equipment and technology. On March 15th, as to get you guys grounded, the Lakewood Board of Education presented a preliminary budget that was cut down. And within that budget, there was approximately $15 million in revenue shortfall. On May 16th, the State of New Jersey provided a release in a sum of $8,522,678. And I'm going to take you through all that impact with the budget and the presentation that you guys are going to be presenting. So the Lakewood Board of Education again received the $8.5 million from the state restoring the following programs and staff. In addition, we received another $84,000 from the township of Lakewood to restore our football program. Part of the $8.5 million included all district-wide teaching positions, including basic skills, athletic programs such as soccer tracks for spring and winter, and the football program. We restored the summer school programs at the high school, literacy coaches, whole curriculum programs, textbooks for K-25, mainly for the science. We added back one position for the media. And we added back... Not added back. We actually are rotating guidance councils. So right now, we have nine guidance councils throughout the district, of which five of those nine will rotate one day per week and will cover guidance services at the elementary school. And that's part of the... Yes. I also want to add to this. In order to restore these programs, the State of New Jersey deferred another $2.51 million in loans and auto repayments that the district has required for the budget for the 2017-18 year. So that was also the story of us to bring back the following programs. Part of the original proposed was, um, a part of the November election was a second question for the remaining athletics for the guidance councils at the elementary school level and for the remaining dollars for the library. That total was about $1.6 million originally. And we've had to renew that as part of the proposed November second question as a result of the district not being able to balance their budget back in May, and we missed the deadline. So the statutory deadline that we were supposed to adhere to on May 14th, um, we missed. Unfortunately, that deadline evolved into questions not being certified till November. So part of the budget, as I said earlier, we originally were tasked with trying to solve a $15 million revenue shortfall. Of that, we still were left with $3.5 million of programs or reductions and programs for the 2017-18 year. These were presented back in March also, and I'll just go through them briefly. There is $200,000 in there for buildings and ground asphalt materials that remained out of the budget. Before an asphalt program, this was the Y program that was in budget. There's two staffing positions that were vacant, they won't be filled. Most of them were on home services of $320,000. That was an expense or dollars that was not utilized in the 2017 budget, so we were able to recognize and save it there. A refund was due, some five that we're extracting, or both accepting. Still supplies, again, $500,000, again, not spent in the 2017-18 year. And some of the school asphalt makes up a total of about $3.5 million. I'm going to move into the next section that lists at the breakdown of revenues and expenditures for the 2017-2018 year. So when you look at it from a percentage breakdown on how our revenue comes into district, 68.7% of that comes from the local, at the local level through tax levies for the most part. Another 23.4% comes from state aid. The $8.5 million that we got from the state of here makes up another $5.9 million and some $12 that came into district. And when you look at it for this prior year in comparison to the rolling in, so our local revenue went up about $3.8 million. Our state aid was relatively flat, up about $400,000. My total revenue is up $5.6 million, which brings us up a total revenue for this year of $143,455. this year of a hundred and forty-three million, four hundred and fifty-five dollars for revenue.
As you can see, the money, the money, where the money comes locally, the money from the state and the state for the individual.
So I'm going to look at on the appropriation side as well, so just to give you an example, you know, the library, some of the major buckets there. Twenty-two percent for operations and maintenance, nineteen percent for research and I think that's tuition, have this placement, another five point six percent in instruction and support, and another thirteen point three in regular instruction. So when you look at it at this view, it kind of gives you a breakdown on how the dollars are spent, how the hundred and forty-three million comes into district.
As you can see, the money, the money, the forty-three million dollars, how it's divided by the percentage. Twenty-two point three percent of the money is what it's got from the, uh, the, the, the and then there's different, uh, different colors, yeah, there's a lot of division.
And when you look at it for this prior year, overall, some of the major ones are benefits went up two point nine million dollars. That's going to add, they could still cover it and that one time two million dollars. The general admin services line is down one point two, that's because of the money we were discovering. And overall, our total budget increase is five point six million dollars.
In every, you can see, from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and seventeen, how much was the total? And then there's also the difference, how, uh, the prices have shifted in various places. For example, the, uh, the, the, uh, 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 the, uh,[1364.12]
The law requires you, whoever voted, voted against her to change their vote, that has to be voted on before you can bring her back.
This was, this was a new motion to reappoint her as superintendent, it did not require-
No, no, no. Okay, okay, you're the attorney.
Right.
What I'm saying, but be extremely careful because she may have made a mistake. Okay, I'm asking you, the attorney, to check it out.
I will certainly check it out, Dr. Rush. And be confident that-
I think, I think the board, somebody who decided to vote against her has to say, I'll change my vote.
No, so-
Okay.
So what you're, respectfully, what you're talking about is a motion for reconsideration. This was not a motion for reconsideration, you're correct. If it's a motion for reconsideration, it has to be brought by somebody who was on the prevailing side. This was an entirely new motion to reappoint. So it did not require any type of explanation or motion by somebody who voted in the majority last time.
Okay, I'm asking-
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm just asking you, on the record, as the attorney, check it out.
I will certainly do that.
Till you get mid-January or mid, uh, or July and you find out you made a terrible mistake, that's all I-
We want to do it right.
Okay. The, the other thing I need to clear up before my questions is regarding the busing issue that, uh, the young lady in the back asked. The problem was last year, Lakewood students living within a mile, they were supposed to be paying, they were supposed to be charged a hundred and fifty dollars for their transportation. They were not charged last year. The board found this out late and that's why they're not getting buses this year. That's, that's the problem. So it's not more kids, it's monies should have gone where those families had to pay, just like the non-publics had to pay, but things changed and you guys didn't make a right decision, somebody made a mistake on that in transportation. So that has to be cleared up. That's another thing I'm asking to clear up. Now, I'm gonna ask my questions. Young lady who spoke a few minutes ago regarding thorough and efficient. In Lakewood, thoroughly, thorough and efficient means minimum. Our kids deserve more than minimum because of where they live, their family backgrounds, the poverty rate in Lakewood, thorough and efficient is not enough. The young lady spoke well when she spoke of elementary guidance counselors. What you guys are gonna do now, you're gonna take one guidance counselor and have that person rotate. That is something that should not be done. You gotta look at that. Now, what I'm suggesting you do is relook at your budget because I saw some things in there that you could reconfigure to make a difference. I.e., transportation as we've spoken of. You got too much money in transportation, that could save five or six guidance counselors. There's too much money, you got nine people in an office, you don't need nine people to run transportation in a district with five, six thousand kids. So I'm asking you, the budget people, to look at, to relook at that. I'm also looking at security. Look at how much money you're paying for the amount of security we have. Make some differences, make some different decisions in that area and put the money back where it belongs for kids. That's what I'm saying. Now, an example. God bless the township for giving the money for athletics. I'm a former athlete, athlete, so I understand the importance. However, as the young lady stated, I'm concerned about- Now, you have an athletic director, you had an athletic director thirty-four years. And our trainer, thank you. And to me, I don't many, I don't remember that many kids suffering of, being hurt because we had a good trainer. Just last year, a wrestler experienced cardiac arrest. And the athletic trainer, trainer brought that child back to life. So if you're gonna have football or any athletic sports, you got a trainer, it's worth somebody saying. And I'm not talking about this lady who's been thirty-four years, but I've seen her out there on the field, I've seen her run around and do things. So if you're gonna have football, you need a trainer. If you're gonna have basketball, you need a trainer. But more than that, my concern is you need elementary guidance counselor first. You need teachers in the classroom first, you need librarians, full-time librarians, you don't need them rotating.
Dr. Rush, that's a time.
I know it's my time, uh, my time is up, but I'm asking you, board, to reconsider, look at what you have, look at your mothers, reconfigure that and try to bring as many of these educating, these teachers and counselors back to the district. I think that's, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Él dice que verdaderamente que vuelven a dentro de ese presupuesto porque hay mejoría. Hay ciertas cosas que ellos pueden cambiar. Por ejemplo, sobre transportación, quizá fue que a ellos se les fueron el hilo porque ellos estaba supuesto cobrarle a la familia ciento cincuenta dólares a aquellos que vivían a una milla más y ellos parece que no lo hicieron y ahora están haciendo estos recortes. So ellos tienen que chequear bien ese presupuesto porque ellos pueden hacer más recorte en el sentido de que cambiar el dinero de un lado al otro para poder suplir las necesidades que hay aquí. Necesitan, este, tienen deporte pues tienen que suplirle un trenador. El año pasado, uno que no tienen, no son, no juegan deporte, no tienen otras cosas que hacer, si no, no juegan este, no tocan instrumentos, pero que ellos verdaderamente tienen, hay que ver otras actividades para tener la mente ocupada para estos estudiantes. Hay la necesidad de las personas en la biblioteca, los maestros, los consejeros, so por favor, chequen ese presupuesto.
Mr. Enzobuck.
Buenas noches. Felizanos, Erita Winters. Congratulations, Superintendent Winters, beautiful. But I cannot accept and will not accept until there is a thorough and efficient education and until this budget is fixed. No surprise, it's in my letter. I shoot from the front, you'll all learn that quick. You have failed the students, all the students of Lakewood, not just the public students, and please don't patronize me by shaking your head. You have failed every single student, but they don't have the power, you see, because they don't have money. And the township, let's get it straight, eighty-four thousands are not coming anymore because they're not gonna be the scapegoat either. And let me tell you news, Mr. Monitor. The amount is somehow I know and you don't, is about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars coming from the state. That and about five million more will help you. Here's some suggestions as not your attorney. One, security should be analyzed. Now, before anyone says, I don't like Mr. Stillwell, doesn't matter who I like and who I don't like, I don't like many people. And many people don't like me, but I go to sleep well every night with my boss, my wife. But there needs to be a security review. How much, not who, we don't talk about personnel, I hope, but how much security is costing? Oprah requests, lawyer letters, how much is security costing? I ask this question, I can't get an answer, and I get answers. You don't know how much security costs, perhaps you'll ask the monitor. Ask him, can we have a breakdown of all the cost of security? And then you see, instead of everyone running around writing lawyers' letters and making lawyers richer, you'll be able to do an analysis. He doesn't have the answer. I asked.
I think I do.
Okay, well, then you can tell the board, since when I spoke to you last, you told me you didn't. That's right, wait, wait, excuse me, I'm not gonna have, we don't, we don't have discussion, no cross discussion.
Six hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Good. Can you break that down for the public, please?
Let, let, let Mr. Enzobuck finish-
I don't need a cross discussion.
Mr. Shafter, let, let Mr. Enzobuck finish his comments and like we, we'll respond at the end, please. Okay?
So six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, so two companies have operated, have not received it, I don't represent them, but they have lawyers. It's good to hear that number. I'd like a breakdown, or maybe you would like a breakdown. And again, I make this clear, I'm not getting involved in the Stillwell yes or Stillwell no, but I am getting involved in, I know Mr. Stillwell, I know what he is and what he isn't, just like I am what I am, what isn't. But what's the cost? Now, let's go to transportation. Transportation, not non-public, you don't, you're not responsible for that, thank God. What is the cost of transportation? Here are some questions. Herb, we've met recently, we may have differences. You didn't vote for me, I understand, but there's nothing to vote for. What is transportation costing? Have the routes gone out? When did they go out to the county? When? When? Okay, last minute. How much is the transportation department costing you? How much is Gus Kakavakis, who wears many yarmulkes, costing you? Ask, ask, I don't know where you are. Ask that, but you all just sit here and I'm offended. Ms. Gonzalez, you were different. You all have a piece of paper about this budget, everyone's sitting here saying, we don't have it. We had a little presentation, Herb is reading from page eleven, no one knows what the hell he's talking about, because we don't have a budget. But this is with state intervention. It's gotten better since two thousand twelve. Tell the Hasbury Park Press that. So ask, so that now, not in a side room, not on Nine Street, not on Route eighty-eight, not in Coventry, wherever you want to meet. Ask here, what is it costing? But again, I thank you for the offer, and until there's a thorough and efficient education, I'm not interested, but you don't have the power. You don't, but you could say no tonight, I heard President Ian, I understood him and I heard him, so I don't know if that was part of the game people play here, but he had a concern. The time for concerns are over, the time to say no to this budget is now. Now, I guess I'll get answers.
Shafter, floor is yours. Let's start with the questions again, one at a time.
We say it in my language, sangra, go ahead.
What's the first question?
The first question is six ninety-eight, how did you get that number? Can you break it down for the board, please, and the public? I can't hear you. The microphone still work, we have money, right?
Six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars in salaries, three hundred dollars professional technical service.
Wait, I'm sorry, I had a marker, Mr. Zinnimer, I don't hear it, do you? Six thirty-something, I don't know.
Mr. Shafter, can you speak up, please, it's hard to hear.
Six thirty-eight, four three three.
Four three three for salaries?
Three five oh, purchase professional technical services, three hundred and fifty dollars. Eighty-two hundred dollars cleaning, repair, and maintenance services. Fifty thousand dollars for general supplies, fifteen hundred dollars for other objects.
Give him a chance, please, he's a nice fellow.
That's it.
So I, Mr. Zinnimer, I'm sorry, I refer to you because you are the board attorney. Could you ask, because people have been operating tomorrow maybe, uh, what the six thirty, which salary, don't need to know this, does that include Stillwell or not? But I don't need to know particulars. Don't you want to know what the six thirty you do?
It includes Mr. Stillwell.
How many, again, I'm directing to the board attorney.
Directed through the board president.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know the difference. Uh, board president, I was accused of that too, don't worry. Six thirty, four thirty-three, I'm asking, how many employees? How many employees? Are they full-time or part-time? I'm also asking, are uniforms included? I'm also asking if cars or whatever they use to patrol are included? Could you ask the monitor?
Mr. Shafter, to the extent we have this information, could you-
No, he said he has it.
But uniforms are included.
Include, one minute, hold on.
Radios are included, the cost of the radio service is included.
What about how many employees, Mr. President? You told me to tell.
You can ask directly, it's fine.
Oh, they, they wore their, whatever.
Mr. Shafter, can you clarify?
I don't know names, I just need numbers.
How many employees?
Oh, Regina's gonna get it.
Robinson has it, she's gonna get it.
Wait, now, what about my other question? Remember, we're doing questions.
Mr. Shafter, can you respond to his other questions, please? Excuse me? Can you respond to the other questions that were posed by Mr. Enzobuck, please?
Asking to get the detailed information so that-
I can't, I can't hear.
The detailed information should be here shortly.
What about the other question? Remember, I was told someone did write them down, right?
Yes. Which other question? I was gonna answer them one at a time, but then you wanted to give your whole-
No, I, what I wanted is to follow the rules here. There's rules here, the state can't change that.
Questions first, answers next, so-
Where are the answers? Mr. President?
Please, please repeat the second question, if you will.
Okay, I will try. We did transportation. Well, we didn't, we didn't, security, you're getting the information. I heard, and again, I'm not trying to get your vote because I'm not interested, but you're a good guy. Uh, the child study team increase, I did it page eleven, I don't know where page eleven is, but it's on the screen.
Seven point two.
Page eleven. Uh, could we have the increase, why they're increasing? I heard a little discussion between themselves, it's not a million, it's half a million. I, I'm sure Herb wants an answer, he didn't just ask it to Grandstand. So, Mr. President, could we have that answer, please?
Could you please do?
Specific.
The line for revised two thousand sixteen-seventeen is the original budget for, from the beginning of the year. Between the beginning of the year and now, there were transfers in and out from various line items depending on the needs of the district. I do know for a fact that there are some vacancies in the child study team members and since they weren't charged for the full year, next year's budget includes full year salaries for all child study team members.
Mr. President, could you ask him how many child study team members there are?
Mr. Enzobuck, we do have a time constraint, so-
I know, but the board president-
Why don't we go to the original-
Wait, wait, the board president has to write to the questions.
Let's, let's, let's answer the original questions that you asked.
That's what I asked.
That was one of the original ones?
Yes, it was, I actually, well, actually, with the board member.
That is part of the information that Regina's getting right now, she's getting detailed information of all the employees that are charged to each line item in the budget so that we can answer your questions one by one.
Okay, so let me just get this, because I, I don't, is anyone right? Doesn't matter. Transportation, how many? Uh, security, how many? Child study team, how many? Now, I, Mr., and again, I defer to the board president because under Roberts' rules, I reject that offer too. Under Roberts' rules, he has the right to allow, so if he wants to stop, he can.
So wait up, just so we're clear on the question of how many, you talked about how many staff-
How many staff members, what the positions are, how many psychologists, we don't, how many social workers? Now, Mr. Zinnimer, don't take this the wrong way because the position was mine as a moment ago.
Can, can you send me an email with all-
No, I don't want to send that, Mr. Ian, I'm asking you to let my, I'm not emailing any of you anymore. You'll, you'll read about it. So if you allow, how much is allocated, don't take it personally, to legal expenses for the upcoming year, I'd like to know that.
Six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
How much was spent last year?
I don't have that answer.
Okay. Does that include the lawyers who sue and win and the lawyers who try to win but don't have the support to win?
That includes legal expenses, it's not include judgments. The opposing lawyers paid them with judgments.
Uh-huh. So it's, uh, how much, Mr. Ian's in charge, remember? How many, how much, um, was judgment this past year?
Again, that information is not available at the moment because I don't keep a line, I don't keep a line by line.
You have to make a big point. I'm sorry, there, he, there's a little discussion, Mr. Zinnimer's telling the board president.
Right, if there's other people waiting to speak.
There are other people, does anyone mind if I ask my questions? How much are the judgments? Do I just want that? And then I'll leave. No, it's right here.
Use the shot, no problem.
I believe we have a board secretary's report that we can refer to.
You're not getting answers?
Yeah, legal services expenditures to date, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Oh my, okay, so I leave you, good night, it's been nice, we're all friends. When there's a thorough and efficient education call me.
You wanted judgments, I have that number for you also.
You just told me six sixty-six.
That's legal expenses, judgments to date, five hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars.
So if I understand, it's six-
When you say judgments, just to be clear, we're talking about possible settlements and judgments, correct?
That's correct. Mr. Zinnimer, thank you for the clarity, but I wrote down, sorry, six six six, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, then I was told six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, then I was told five hundred and fourteen thousand.
Which one is it, Mr. Shafter? I don't, he's, he's doing a lot of numbers, one might, so let's-
Isn't that good?
So what do you want to know?
Um, can you please, Mr. Ian, I'm asking one last request before, we'll still be friends. Can you just get clarity, the six sixty, he just read that, but I'm not playing.
The sixty, the six sixty-six is what's budgeted for next year, that was the first question you had.
And what's the six twenty-seven?
That's the amount expended to date this year.
And what's five fourteen?
Five fourteen is judgments expended to date this year.
Be well when you have a thorough and efficient education call me, good night.
Thank you. This is, uh, Brian?
Um, I know Regina's not here, the slide that she showed that had the chart. The slide that she showed that had the chart. Yes. And then after that, there was a list of expenditures, I guess, there were things that are being cut. In that list, there was five hundred thousand dollars under school supplies. Can someone tell me, five hundred thousand, that's being cut, if you can clarify that for me? It's on the list where she had all the numbers and it says school supplies, five hundred thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Am I correct?
School supplies are being reduced down to actual expenditures for the current year.
To actual, well, considering that we had bare minimums and teachers were going out spending their own money to get supplies, where is, what is in five hundred thousand?
I, I believe there's a failure of communication within the schools. There is a sufficient amount of money for teachers not to have to use any of their own dollars for school supplies. You may have, teachers may have been using their own dollars, but there is always a sufficient number, there's, there's three to four hundred thousand dollars left in the current school supply account that were not expended. So there was definitely a failure of communication between teachers and their principals regarding the purchase of school supplies.
Since Mrs. Winters is still the superintendent and we changed our mind and we're gonna keep her on for three years, Superintendent, can you verify whether a freeze on supplies going this school year, which forces people to come out of their own pockets to get the basics? I'm not talking over and beyond, basic supplies for classrooms. We always have a freeze in March on, on, based on everything, so any, any teacher that needed anything was always told to go to the principal and I've never received any, any email that anyone needed anything. So anyone who needs anything is to email me and I release the files. I'm putting it on public record, teachers, listen, we're putting it on public record if supplies are needed and we can't get it within our two hundred and whatever the number you just said, to please contact the community because the community's gonna hold the administrators accountable for those school supplies because like I said, we have, we have students in this district, they barely have pens, paper, whatever, textbooks, general supplies, so we would hope that you're not trying to hurt them on that. And then on the other end, we talk about expenses, I know Mr. Enzobuck was pointing to different areas, I agree with him and I know that's shopping, but I agree with him on waste in a certain way. I do believe that people should be paid for their services. However, in our district, which has been in-